Call the city council work session to order, clerk, please call the board.
Councilperson LaWor.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Michelangelo.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Jermaine.
Here.
Pat Clark.
Here.
We have a few items on our work session agenda, and I'll just turn it over to Mr. Pastu, the city manager, so we can get started.
Thank you, your honor. First item that we have is discussion regarding ITC Transmission Custer Line rebuild project. I'll have Mr. Mark Cochran do the introductions with our guests from ITC.
Honorable mayor, city council, Mark Cochran, Assistant City Manager and Economic Development Coordinator. As you are aware, last year, our friends at ITC came to us to let us know that they were planning to make a significant infrastructure upgrade in the city in the form of upgrading the Custer Monroe Line, which is the transmission line that runs from the substation at the corner of Maple and Noble in Monroe, heading out to the Monroe Power Plant. And at that time, we had conversations, and I know Vince talked with Cynthia Stump with ITC, to have a discussion about was there a possibility to reroute the lines to accommodate some of the future development that's happening around the battlefield and the Heritage Corridor. And I have to say that they have been tremendous partners over the past year and tremendously patient, as we have worked together with them and the National Park Service in coming up with some alternative routes for consideration. I think between the city and the National Park Service, we've provided ITC with no less than a dozen different routing alternatives that we've been working through over the past year. And so tonight, Adele Pascaris and Pat Clark with ITC are here. Pat is the engineer to provide some information on technical questions if we need. But Adele has been tremendously helpful in partnering with us as we've worked through this process. Certainly, we did not want to delay their project or add any significant cost, but we're grateful that they have been open to considering the alternative. And I think what we have come up with for the final recommended route this evening is certainly not perfect, but it's much better than what we had before, and it accomplishes some of our goals. So I'll invite Adele up to kind of walk us through the project and show us the map and the alternative.
Thanks, Mark, for the introduction, and thank you, Mayor Clerk, and to council for having me tonight. And I wanted to give just a quick overview of our project. Oh, okay. I'm Adele Pascaris. I'm an area manager with ITC's local government and community affairs. And I just want... That maybe helps for an honorary. Okay, perfect. Thank you. For those who are not familiar with ITC, we're the nation's leading transmission provider. And we're in the business of electrical transmission, so we do transmission only. And to give you an idea, that's the shaded blue area, and you should have some information in your packets as well. So basically, electrical transmission is the bulk delivery of electrical energy from the generating source, which could be a power plant or a wind farm. Electricity flows through the high voltage transmission lines, and high voltage, the definition, the state of Michigan is 100,000 volts and above. And then it goes through what's called a distribution substation, so the voltage is lowered, and then it is delivered by the distribution company to your homes and businesses. And we've been in business since 2003. We were formed in March of 2003. And since 2003, we have invested over $7 billion in electrical infrastructure. We are in, we have four subsidiaries in eight states. And if you see, the blue is Michigan, which comprises ITC Transmission and Metzey. So it's basically DTE's transmission system, Metzey's consumer's transmission system. And then we're in the Midwest as well, so we're in Iowa, Kansas, Oklahoma, parts of Minnesota, Illinois, and Missouri. And we have over 700 employees and 90,000 square mile service territory. To give you an idea, this is a GIS map of city of Monroe. And if you see the lines, the blue and the pink, that shows our electrical transmission lines. And I had to remove the voltage level and the names due to cybersecurity. But just to give you an idea, so we have a presence in your community. And here are some pictures of what the electrical transmission towers look like. So the ones that we have in Monroe County are the 120 KV, 138 KV, 230, and 345. And we're currently upgrading our systems, or we're replacing wood poles with steel structures, which increases the capacity and the reliability. And the project that I'm presenting tonight is the Custer Monroe. We're rebuilding over three miles of transmission, and we're upgrading from the current 120 KV to 230 KV. And we're also, we're also moving from the existing line, which I'll cover later, and this is done to increase the capacity and the reliability in the region. And we're scheduled to have this in service by the end of next year, and we're hoping to have construction started early next year. I was hoping to make this image larger, but to just give you an idea, if you look at the, over here, that's where the current line is. So it's north of the river is where the current line is. And to accommodate for the expansion of the... Mark to the rescue. Thank you. Now, that's perfect. Thank you. So if you look across Elm, this is where our current line is. And per city's request, we decided to relocate to south of the river in order to accommodate for the expansion of the River Rayson National Battlefield Project, which I think is a great project. And we looked at routing studies independently, so we had an independent contractor who looked at different routes, and we've worked with the city as well, as Mark said earlier. So there were many, many alternatives that we evaluated, and then we had various criteria that we looked at. And then it was, you know, decided that this was the optimal route in terms of accommodating for the future development and also being able to accomplish what ITC is trying to do in the region. So the route is south of the river, so it goes through Front Street, and then it crosses over Dixie, and then goes west of Dixie Highway to the existing line. And we're trying to utilize, you know, current right-of-way and that city-owned easement, so I may come back at a later time to ask for approval on some of these easements. So we have not gone through that yet, through that process, but I just wanted, as a first step, to kind of introduce the project and the route. Okay, thank you. And I wanted to reiterate that we're not just a transmission provider company, we're also a partner in the community, and we're very proud to be involved with various initiatives in the city of Monroe and in the region. We're, for example, we're part of the Monroe County BDC, Monroe County Chamber of Commerce. We just sponsored the concert series in the park. We're also involved with various charitable giving, such as the Monroe Community Foundation, Monroe County Habitat for Humanity. So we're very proud to be members and partners of the community. And thank you for your time and attention. Please let me know if there's any questions.
Let's see if there's any questions from council to start. I know there's the packet of information from ITC, but also the map. As we look through that, I know Mark's backup, he might have a final comment for us before we do. There's any questions. Mark?
Yeah, if I may. I think one of the objectives that we had in working with ITC was if we were going to move these lines toward the south end of the river, that one of the challenges we had was a number of private easements that we would have to work on with private property owners. And so we really worked hard with the property acquisition that we've been doing in the area around the battlefield and the Heritage Corridor to keep the lines on city-owned property, if ITC was willing to partner with us on relocating the lines. And I have to say, one of the things that they did not ask was how is the city going to pay for this? We've had conversations with other utilities about moving some of the utilities in the area of the Heritage Corridor, and the question that's been asked is what is the city going to do to pay for this? And that has not been something that ITC has asked. So it's been a great collaborative relationship working with ITC on this project. I will say, one thing that's unknown at this point is who else is going to be co-locating on the lines with ITC. Right now, DTE and, I'm not sure if any of the cable companies have co-located lines, but where the actual poles will be placed is unknown at this time. So the purple line that you saw is just the general route that we're looking at, not necessarily exactly where the lines are going to be placed. So when we look at the area around the former multi-sports complex, and where the lines are going to be cutting behind the building as well as crossing the river, those just give us a general idea until we can work with the other utilities and find out what their needs are.
I'll see if there's any questions from council or Dale.
I have come.
John?
I think Mark answered my question. That was the only concern I saw in the proposed routing, was the location of the high transmission line through the south part of the city-owned property that's south of the former arena, which is a part of the, in the master plan, that's where they're going to have the ribbon farms. So it's awful hard to interpret a French ribbon farm when you've got a 200 and, or 100-foot or 200-foot utility pole that runs right over the top of it. So, I mean, I guess... My concern would be trying to push those poles as far over as possible to decrease the visual impact it's going to have on the historic resources.
Yep.
And we will be able to have more detail in terms of the spanning of the towers and the height of the towers when we know more about co-location plans.
In terms of the slide where you showed the different types of towers, which type of tower is proposed for Monroe?
That's a good question.
That one right there?
Yeah, that's an example of the 230 KV.
Okay. Now, if you're having co-location, like if Detroit Edison is going to use it, where do they, they go on the lower tier, or do they have, they have other arms below the three?
So it would be the under-bill, but I'm sure Pat can give you more details, since he's a design engineer.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Pat Clark. I'm a senior engineer with ITC's Transmission Line Design Group. In the situation for under-bill, it's not shown on this pole, but it would be located across arm or attachments underneath the transmission. So the lower insulators here, there would be a cross-arm or davenport installed.
Okay.
And similar with any third-party attachments. It would be a distribution level and a third-party.
Typically, how high off the ground are those co-located lines?
That would depend on the individual utility. Like a communication space, a communication cable would be lower than the distribution primary.
Okay.
Also, also part of that is the spans. If Edison, the primary, is probably going to have a shorter span than the traditional transmission structures.
Rewind that statement for me.
Probably getting a little too involved at this point.
They'll have more poles? Is that what that means? There'll be more poles if they have shorter spans?
Depending on how the line is designed, the distribution could potentially have more structures than the transmission. And that's part of the discussion we have to have with Detroit Edison, whether we're going to build one-for-one, same as they did as currently on, is it Noble Street?
Yeah. And that's our goal. We're hoping to do one-for-one by, and it would depend on these other decisions.
Okay.
I guess, I don't know if there's other comments, questions from council. As I think about that, because I know there's a reroute, and of course, there's going to be ongoing discussions with DTE and looking for their, I'll just say, partnership with us as well, because if we move forward with the ITC, what then is where, where does the DTE lines in, in the poles? And trying to, I appreciate the efforts. I guess it's more what I'm saying is thanks for the discussions and looking at the route. You know, well, John says, you know, we still have, you know, it's, I think it's in relation to the national park and the plans forward. Obviously, it's better than what we were currently at. Looking for that partnership to keep going, so I wish you well in our conversations as we move forward, and yours, projects, I have, but also DTE, and why that's a benefit to everybody. Mr. Pastu, do you have a...
I was just going to ask, on this, the typical height of the pole itself is...
That will depend on whether Edison is under-billed with the third parties.
Ah, okay.
A little premature for me to comment on the structure of height.
Okay. Now, you...
Go ahead.
Just again, part of this is kind of, kind of introduction where we're at. Again, we will probably have on the city council agenda easements that would go across any of the city property for this project to take place. It'd probably be at least maybe two, three months down the road, but, but you had noticed that, again, that'll probably be a function of discussion with DTE as well, so.
Your honor, if I may, yeah. A question, back to the map, in the south of Front Street, west of 75, for the 75 interchange proposed, changed the exits, they're going to move where Front, one of the proposals includes a movement of where Front Street is existing now, and it looks like the objective is to have the power line follow the road, but the road's about to move. So I'm wondering if this would happen after the, after Front Street would be resettled in its future location, or if we're building a line where a road will not be, and the potential impact for that southwest corner in between Front and 75 of any wetland impact, the ecological impact. I don't know where Dick Mika is when you need him, but I'm sure he would have a thing or two to say.
Right. I know within the manager's update, he did provide in his sheet to council some discussions on that, as to go forward with him down on that project as well. I'll leave it to Mr. Pastu to see if there's any thoughts on that, because if the road is where it is currently, where it'll end up, you know, where the project goes to. So it's a good point, because we're doing things at the same time in the same area.
So while, so while the gateway into the community may be different as a result of the ramp, we still have to get access up to the wastewater plant. So the road will still be there. It will run along the right-of-way, even if at some point in the future, for whatever reason, it's vacated. The easement associated with that will still remain. So I don't see that having any impact on the potential relocation of the, of the ramp there on 75 and Front Energy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Your honor, my only, I guess my last comment is the proposed routing really does open up a lot of the view sheds for the battlefield. And so I thank ITC for, you know, the effort that they've put into doing that. I guess a lot, a lot of these plans, the doubles and the details, and unfortunately, I, we just haven't had such a great track record this last two years with the DTE being what I would refer to as a community partner. So when you guys mentioned that you don't know what the possible outcome or height is going to be, because you haven't, you know, resolved anything with DTE, I guess that's my only concern. It's not, it's not the work that you're doing, it's the questions you can't answer, because you don't have any answers yet from DTE. So, but I do appreciate everything that you're doing here. Looks good.
Thank you. And we do have a meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks, and hopefully we'll have more insight into the future plans, also regarding co-location.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you much. Thanks for...
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, Mark.
Just, just to give ITC more kudos, I think this is, this is a great opportunity, putting my economic development hat on, the fact that they're increasing capacity in our community and making the infrastructure upgrades as we look to do more development at the port and more development around the Heritage Corridor, as we try and recruit businesses, whether they be industrial, commercial, or residential customers. At the same time, making sure that we have the electricity to meet their demands is important, and I'm glad that ITC recognizes that by making this investment. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, though. Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Vince, next item.
Our next item is kind of a follow-up from a conversation that we had a, at the last meeting regarding the Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission. City Attorney Matt Bugs, working with Mr. Cochran as well, had drafted an ordinance to address, I think, what I think is some of the issues or some of the preferences with establishing this commission. Again, it is one of the city council's 2018, 19 goals to establish this. So I'm going to let Mark take a shot at it, going through it, unless Mr. Bugs wants to... Okay, Mark.
All right, thank you. So as Vince mentioned, this is a follow-up to previous discussions that we had had. As we, as we continue to implement and make progress on the development of Heritage Corridor, I think it's important that we, we figure out who is making the ultimate decisions of what is going where, when is things, when are things, what's the order of implementation, if there's tweaks or changes that need to be made, who's making those, and recognizing that this is part of the city's master plan. We talked with city council earlier this year about setting up some sort of advisory task force or committee, as you will. And the more that we thought about it, the more we thought, maybe this should be a formal commission that is set up by ordinance for the city. And the justification for that was, we've done ad hoc committees in the past, but they've been primarily for projects that have short-term end date in mind, thinking about the fire station steering committees, some of the personnel committees that we've had. Once the construction of the fire station is done, that committee will likely go away. But the Heritage Corridor was designed to be built out and developed over the period of 20, 30, 40 years, as resources become available. And so to make sure that this thing outlives you, me, and everybody else at this dais, we thought a formal commission in place with a direct edict by council to meet and make recommendations, provided regular report to city council, as well as having the commission members on the list of mayoral appointees every two years. Keeps that at the forefront of everybody's mind, so that we make sure this development keeps moving forward. So that was the justification of moving away from a task force or an advisory committee into an appointed commission by charter, or by ordinance. And so I'll kind of walk through this, that we worked closely with Matt Bugs, as well as some of our stakeholders on. So the purpose of the commission, again, is to meet city council's goal under economic development, to make recommendations to the mayor, council, city manager, and the planning commission regarding the implementation, prioritization, phasing, modification, and development of the Heritage Corridor. The commission is only going to function in advisory capacity. There's going to be no authority granted to the commission, other than to make recommendations to the city council and the planning commission. So looking at the makeup and the body of the commission, one thing you'll note, under section 22-52, letter D, this, the National Park Service and the superintendent would not have a seat on the commission. That's not meant to be any disrespect to our friends at the Park Service or the superintendent, but the Park Service has come out with new rules recently that their staff cannot serve on boards, commissions, committees, or anything of that sort. So we built some language in that the commission would review information provided by the superintendent and engage in dialogue with the superintendent to make sure that that they're a primary stakeholder who are, who are at the table during commission meetings. One thing that we wanted to bring before you for discussion tonight was how many members should the commission have? The draft ordinance that you had before you does list seven commission members, but we thought again about, should that be five, should that be seven, looking at some of the work that we've been doing with some of the other boards and commissions that the city has, what is the right number? So coming to you for that feedback tonight. Letter B, well, going back to A, each of the commission members would serve for three-year terms. So the recommended individuals that should serve on the corridor ultimately would be the decision of the mayor and city council, though, are representatives from the stakeholder groups, be it the Battlefield Park Foundation, the Monroe County Historical Commission, the Monroe County Historical Society, and the Monroe County Library System, as well as a citizen-at-large that the mayor would appoint and the city council would confirm. The other thing that we wanted to have some discussion and get your feedback on is how many members should be residents of the city? How many members should be residents of the county out of those five or the seven? So we'll come back for that discussion. But again, the charge that the ordinance sets up, that council would dictate to the commission, is that they will meet at least once a quarter, and then annually, the commission would provide a written report to the planning commission and the city council, giving an update on the development of the Heritage Corridor, as well as implementation and other items. So just like all of our other boards and commissions, the commission meetings would be open to the public, there would be a city council liaison for the commission, as well as staff appointed by the city manager to staff and service secretary for the commission. So that's, that's pretty much the overview and the bones and the framework that we put in place, but certainly welcome your, your comments and feedback on what we've worked to draft so far.
A couple of questions, we'll see if the council does, just about the membership, just to follow up and some detail on that. I'll just start. So obviously, the draft here starts with seven, considering five, and I know that we've been through some boards and commissions as of late, that we're looking to find the right number, so we have four members attending, and five is where several lawyers have gone recently, the traffic committee, zoning board of appeals, and maybe another. So, but if I understand that, let's say, if an under B, 2253B, it has the foundation, the historical commission, the historical society, and the library system, which is four, and you said citizen-at-large.
Mm-hmm.
So then, I'll wait for that for a second. But the second, next part, the commission cell include one commissioner, who shall be a member of city council and serve as liaison to city council. So the council member is not a voting member, I guess, they're the liaison, because what the recommendations come back, the council then votes at that point. Is that the thought process?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then it does add up to five, as I understood it, which is the citizen-at-large.
Yeah, five members, as well as a city council liaison and city staff.
So, and going down one more, under the D, because if it went to five, I'm assuming it would be, looking for that quorum, I think it was about next later section, a majority constitutes a quorum, which would probably be three then, so I'm assuming you're looking at three to be residents of the city?
Yeah, three to be resident, I'm sorry.
Good.
Three to be residents of the city, four to be residents of Monroe County, just in case any of the representatives from the other organizations, like the library system or the Battlefield Foundation, might be residents from outside Monroe County.
I understand. They're serving in a commission, just having their residency, but I understand that now. So that would be four, the five would be residents, at least in the county. Majority, three would be from the city.
Mm-hmm.
That kind of clarifies that discussion that goes from seven to five. And at seven, you would have more at large then, or find other organizations, but maybe, I don't need to know that now, I guess.
Yeah, I, I think it could be either of those. We would find other stakeholder groups, or it could be more citizens that are added.
So today is the discussion point, just with the council, so this is kind of the, what we're presenting, see if there's other comments from council, whether it's now, or it could be later, they could order that to the city manager and yourself. So I'll see if there's other comments from council. John?
Comments that I had, Mark, were, do we, and I see that Mr. Bentley's here from the national park, do we want to allow in the creation of the commission an opportunity for Native American representation? It's a good idea. Which may be somebody from outside, even the state of Michigan. And also, do we want to preclude if we want to have a representative on the commission that may be from Canada? Because if the commission is going to advise the city on, on issues relative to the master plan, which involves, you know, a number of different constituent groups, Native American, Canadian, obviously, British, American, should we have an opportunity to have slots available if we, if, for those different constituent groups?
Yeah, I think those are both great suggestions. I don't know if Scott or Tony have anything to add to that. I know one of the concerns that we've had, as the mayor alluded to, is meeting attendance and being able to make sure that we get a quorum, but I... But I also think, being, this is the 21st century, we have the new technology on third floor of city hall, where we may be able to have the opportunity for members to Skype in, if they're from Canada, or members of the Native American nations to telecommute in. See what the city attorney's thought is on that, as well, since, but just an idea and thought.
You know, John, I think it is a good point, and it might be worthy, as we know, the National Park, since their inception here with us, and the foundation board is to tell all stories. And that has been a philosophy, and will continue to be, that all that were participants have a, their story being told, so to bring that to the discussion as well. Looking to Mr. Bugs, I don't know if he was gonna make a comment or not, but welcome to.
Your honor, if I may, I would have some concern about the idea of a commission member, if we're saying that it's gonna be conducted in conformity with the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Attendance by remote has been somewhat of a controversial topic in that regard, so I would say that that would be just a concern that we would want to fit in that discussion.
Okay, something else to follow up with?
And I'll address, just briefly, your honor, if I can. I think it's a fabulous idea. There are actually representatives of organizations from Great Britain that are actually citizens of Monroe County and the city of Monroe. It could be good candidates, and so I think an opportunity would exist to help, you know, Mark, search out potential members, that would either be from Michigan, that would represent the Native American community, and/or, you know, more local connections that could actually be here, if that be the issue. But I think the diversity is a fabulous idea.
Also, may I pose any questions? Okay, other questions from council, or comments? And now, again, as I said, if there's, as you read through that, if there's an item inquired, please pass it along to city manager and Mark, they can get back to all of us with that additional thoughts. Mr. Pastoo?
Thank you, your honor. You know, related to that, if we're looking at expanding it from, you know, the membership, and there's a couple of things, and we could talk this through, if we have at a minimum five numbers, and no more than, say, seven, and you can consider adding, based on the availability of, you know, a Native American representative, as well as any other individual that we could put in there, that would be, you know, a party to the project. The other thing with it is, is, and maybe we may make some clarification, where the staff representative and the council liaison are members that can participate in the discussion, but not vote. And so that that may be, you know, something we may just clarify the language. You'll see it in city charters, like the city manager can participate in the meeting, but has no vote. So I use that as kind of, as an example, where we may help clarify that role and responsibility with this proposed mission.
Very good. So there's other comments? Seeing none?
Your honor, I'm just thinking out of the box here a little bit. We're creating a commission, which is a good thing. The possibility of, because there's quite a few people that are obviously interested in the battlefield, maybe within the commission ordinance, the commission has the ability to create an advisory committee? And maybe the advisory committee would be the committee where you have different representation that wouldn't necessarily complicate the quorum or the Open Meetings Act. So you may have a group of people that are on the advisory committee, for example, like Ted Ligabell, who has been involved off and on. He's a professor from EMU. You've got Heidelberg College, you've got the Native American tribes, you have Canadian interests. Maybe they serve as an advisory capacity, as issues come up, their advice is sought, but they're not part of the formal commission, and then basically their recommendations are taken under advisement, so then we don't run into a problem with the Open Meetings Act, or not be able to fill a slot, because we can't find a member that has that qualification. Just a thought.
Yeah, and I think, if I may, that does fall in line, too, with what I think we have laid out within the responsibilities of the commission, which is to develop collaborative relationships, designed to facilitate the exchange of mutually beneficial information with governmental entities and nonprofits. So establishing an advisory board or committee could fall within that duty and responsibility. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just no other comments? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Mr. Pastoo, next item.
Next item is kind of an ongoing process that we've started, and got to sidetrack for a couple of meetings here regarding a review of DDA boards and commissions. Tonight, I have on the air the Downtown Development Authority. Annette Noel had put together this very nice and concise summary, talking a little bit about, you know, what their duties and responsibilities are. I think going from the board composition, you can have eight to 12 members, including the CEO, in this case, either the mayor or myself, can serve on that. They are appointed by the mayor, and with subject to the approval of the governing body, and that the majority of the members must have an interest in the downtown, whether it's a business, property ownership. I will tell you by way of example, when I was county administrator in Isabella, the fact that I was their representative, we were located in the downtown within their DDA district, they actually made that a, one of the positions in the, on the DDA board, in fulfilling that interest within their. And then there's a residency requirement, if the district has over 100 more residents. So they're structured to have four-year staggered terms. One of the other things with it is, you know, their powers, obviously, to prepare an economic analysis of changes in the district, study and analyze impact of growth, propose, plan and propose construction, renovation, repairs, public facilities of an existing building or multiple family unit. And again, I think part of it is, is somewhere, and I'm not sure if Mr. Eichelangeli will agree, but sometimes some communities have lost sight of the fact that they are primarily involved with economic development and infrastructure related to making, you know, the downtown district more viable economically. Sometimes, you know, we refer to them as becoming, you know, super landscape or super beautification committees, which is an element of it, but clearly, I think their focus needs to be on the economic redevelopment. And so, I'm seeing a nod, but.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think that sometimes we do get, and I say, in a broad sense, across the state, do lose sight of that purpose of the Downtown Development Authority. Obviously, looking with the plans is a significant aspect, and as you know, they recently completed the downtown master plan. They can enter into contracts. They can acquire and lease property. They can buy buildings. I will tell you, Ms. Noel, when we were working in Farmington, took a really raggedy restaurant, acquired it, found a restaurant that would come in and put almost $400,000 in renovations to it. At the end of the day, they owned it. We, as a DDA and city, were made whole, and we ended up with 30 more public parking spaces. These are the kind of things that DDAs can do. But you have to be somewhat aggressive in trying to do that. You know, I think certainly here in Monroe, there's the opportunity for some of these as well. You can collect rents for buildings under its control, create and fund marketing initiatives, contract for broadband services and wireless technology. I will tell you, more and more communities, when I was at a city managers' conference recently, there is a growing frustration with a lot of businesses in certain commercial areas with the broadband or limitations with some existing legacy providers, and more and more of agencies like a DDA have been taking a greater role in help with that business development and that critical infrastructure for their success. They can operate a loan program to fund improvements. Annette and I have talked about that on a couple of occasions, and certainly operate a retail business incinerator. The funding mechanisms, I think most of us are familiar with the tax increment financing being the most prevalent revenue source, but they can also borrow money, in essence, commit revenue bonds for the repayment of a project, if you've got a renter. Make some improvements and pay it back based on the rents received. They can do the city council approval, do the two mil ad valorem levy that would be located exactly within the downtown. And then also special assessments, for example, the principal shopping district. That has to come with city council approval, but it's an assessment that typically will be used for maintenance in the downtown, plus promotions and marketing is the limitation with that principal shopping district. This is something that's on your city council goals and objectives to discuss, and we are hopeful that somewhere at early 2019, we can bring that back for further discussion. The other thing that's, this last year legislation was passed and signed by the governor, with new reporting requirements for all tax increment districts, such as DDAs. A website is one of the things that is now required, and you have to post a number of things, such as the minutes, the budget, annual audit, any adopted redevelopment plan, the current tax increment financing plan, staff contact information, any existing contracts, and then an annual synopsis of activities that take place with this. Interestingly enough, they're now required to have two informational meetings annually, must be posted in compliance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act, notify governing body of each taxing jurisdiction that's engaged with providing some tax increment revenues with that. And then financial report must be submitted annually, on a form to be supplied by the Department of Treasury. Other things to note is, you know, that the city council plays two significant roles. One is approves the downtown annual budget. In fact, tonight, you're going to have a budget amendment. It's on the consent agenda, but while they recommend it, it still requires city council approval. They do function as an independent municipal entity, but work cooperatively with the city council. The city council would be responsible for approving their tax increment finance and development plans. Again, their primary role would be implementing the downtown master plan and the tax increment financing plan. One of the important roles, particularly here in Monroe, DDA in historic downtowns is, needs to support historic preservation, that's a critical element of it. The DDA may employ a director and other staff necessary to accomplish its goals. DDA has its own bylaws, subject to city council approval, and the DDA district has to be within a defined area. So in a broad sense, going through that, there's a lot of interaction, if you will, between any Downtown Development Authority and the city council, but it does give you kind of a broad overview of what they can and can't do. There is some elements and techniques, I think, that here in Monroe, we might be a little more aggressive, again, based on some of both my experience and that of Ms. Noel's in some of these areas, to encourage, you know, redevelopment and bring in new tenants where we may. So having said that, certainly open to any questions, thoughts, comments?
Well, thanks for the review. I know we have other boards and commissions that we've been kind of reviewing, not just from a structural standpoint, but also some information, maybe some questions, just a couple items, I think, that maybe, thought of as, just on today, on this particular review. There's some additional information, I think, that might be beneficial to the council. When you talk about, you know, referring to Act 197 of 1975, that, we get copies of that to the council. The DDA district map, just to refresh our memory of what that is, it's not just the core downtown. I think if we send the map to the council, you'll see how much of a broader location that is at. And the last thing, Vince, you just mentioned it, is the bylaws. And of course, the bylaws were reviewed, revised, and reviewed by city Monroe, October of last year, but we've had new council members since then as well. So that might be an item. I think those three things, it's a bit to read, especially the statute, the Act 197, but, you know, if you just kind of work through it, you'll see some of the items that are on this really nice fact sheet the city manager put together, and see where that falls within there, but an opportunity for council members look at that, as we continue to talk about the DDA district. And items that were mentioned within here, the opportunities that may come forward, and council may have some input on, as DDA is making further decisions on the development side, which is the most critical term within the DDA's title, the downtown, its authority, but it's the development that needs to be one of the priorities. I'll see if there's other questions or comments from council. Make sure we get that to you electronically, if you want a hard copy. The one's kind of long, it might need a hard copy, that we'll see, gets in here back in your mail drawer. Other comments? Seeing none? So we'll get the additional information, and thanks for the update, Vince. Next item.
The next item is just to provide city council with, just kind of an update with where we are with the fire station number one budget. I put a spreadsheet out on the table prior to the meeting, and obviously, since we did the bond issue, and I did present this in early October to the steering committee, to let them know where it is, where we are with this. But the first column is roughly where we thought the budget was when we approved the construction manager at risk contract with AUC for the fire station. You can see, we're looking at $6 million in revenues, and then going through the construction-related expenses, and a number of line items, and then additional fees incurred by the city. At the conclusion, we were looking at a little over, potentially about $140,000, coming from capital improvements, if that was necessary. And at that time, I think we discussed, look, if we manage this the right way, we can cut down on a couple of areas and fall within that. And since then, you know, the situation is a little more favorable. If you look at the source of funds, the projected slash actual, clearly, we got the $6 million from the bond proceeds when they were sold back in September. Interestingly enough, we received an underwriter's premium. If you look down, where it says bond issuance, you'll see a line item for $140,000, and it came in at 78. Typically, what you do is, and historically, I anticipate that we're gonna be paying a price for the underwriter to market these bonds, and it's fairly common, and we budget accordingly. In this case, they increased the dollar amount and gave us additional $141,000, and based on the interest rates, and from a marketing standpoint, they periodically make those decisions, of which I don't thoroughly understand how or why, but there is some rationale behind it. So the benefit of it is, is that we got $141,000 additional dollars to work with. And then we incorporated, you know, the interest earnings through the course of it. Obviously, we get the cash on the front end, but we just do gradual dispersments over the cycle of construction. So at the end, we're just a little bit under $6.2 million is what we're gonna end up, where we're anticipating with the source of funds that will be available. When you get to the construction-related expenses, again, really not any changes from that, other than, even in total, there really isn't any changes. You'll see a contingency amount that drops, and then a separate line item for four-fold doors, and I'll come back to that as the last item for discussion. When you get to the additional fees, when we put the budget together, we were thinking that that was lumped in with the construction expenses for the contractors, the total cost for all the trades. It was not, so we had to add that back in. And then the others, we just, once you've got the land amount in there, we put all of the closing costs and any of the due diligence with, from an environmental standpoint, to incorporate that, gives you a close cost to what that is. The reduction that I alluded to in the bond issuance cost, primarily what that is, is what we didn't expend money on was the bond counsel, the financial advisors, there's notifications, printing of the official statements, those type of things were covered in that. And then the one thing I would propose is, we went very light, I think, on the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and then suggesting that we may bump that number up, given the funds that would be available. At the end of the day, I think, and I'll go back up to the four-fold doors, right now, we've got the retractable overhang doors, which is fairly traditional. This was an item that we had on the air, and then pulled it out to try and get the budget within that. There is still some operational discussions that need to take place with the steering committee before pulling the trigger on that, but as this project is going in, it's going fairly well with the construction, is that we'll have to give AUC some direction, probably, maybe at our second meeting in December, whether we're gonna do that or not. maybe at our second meeting in December, whether we're going to do that or not. I will convene another meeting of our steering committee so that they can submit a recommendation to city council. Given the magnitude of the dollar amount in consideration, that it would require a change approval from the city council to AUC to incorporate that. And so, I think, given the magnitude, that I felt inappropriate. But the two things I really wanted to stress with this is, here's where we're at. I think we're not looking, hopefully, to put any money at all from the capital improvements fund as we initially did. If you recall, we had some concern about, once you come out of the ground, how much backfilling of, we knew there was some tunnels there, we thought we captured most of what we needed to, but we were concerned that we may have to put some, more filled earth than anticipated. We came out of the ground pretty good and so I think going forward with the project, it's moving as progressed with that. So, other than that, there's one other change that we'll talk about, I think, when we get back in December and it's related to some glazing with the building itself and I think with the discussion of, at the recommendation or suggestion of the subcontractor with the windows as well as AUC and the architect, Redstone, they all concur that this probably would be a better thing. It'll certainly help with some of the weatherization, not getting any of the, you know, weather effect of fogging the window or any moisture that would accumulate. So, it is a change that we've went forward with that, so to keep things moving along. So, wanted to give you a broad overview, put you on notice that there is going to be a discussion coming up regarding these four-fold doors that may come to the city council sometime in December, so.
Questions? Comments from the council? Thanks for the update.
Yeah, the updates were good. Vince, you said in sometime in December, the committee will reconvene?
Yeah.
Okay. And that will come back after that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think historically, we've tried to do them after one of our meetings in, council meetings the following Tuesday morning and that's probably where I'll look to schedule that and get everybody together to make a decision. And that would give us an opportunity to get it before the city council at the last meeting in December.
Okay. Look forward to that discussion. Other items?
Got a handful of items on the regular agenda tonight, some of which, you know, we put under council action. I think there's two items on the consent agenda that I will ask to be brought for council action. One is pertaining, it's item 2233, it's wastewater treatment plant, sludge hauling and disposal amendment. And part of it is, is that the city attorney and utilities director are finalizing their discussion with the vendor regarding some contract language. All I'm going to ask is that, when we get to that, is that we will ask in the motion to approve, that council approve it subject to final agreement language approved by the city attorney. But having said that, I'm looking for, Mr., he is, if you don't mind coming up, giving city council a little background on what necessitated this change.
Mayor and council, Barry Leroy, Director of Water and Wastewater for the city. Our sludge that we decan at our wastewater plant is landfill currently and our current landfiller is Republic, Vienna Junction down at the, near the border. We were notified last Monday that they have to meet a new mandatory nationwide standard for how many gallons of municipal solid waste to wet waste, which is our sludge. They now exceed that, so they cut our loads in half. What that means for us is we can't process it. We have to slow down the process and that's a problem for the plant because we really can't turn the switch off coming to the plant for our flows. So, we're looking for a backup landfill. That's what this agreement's about, to allow us the ability to send a load to our current landfiller, which is our most cost-effective option, but also have an alternative. Since last Monday, we've been, we looked at nine different landfills and from northwest Ohio all the way to Lansing and Waste Management's the most reliable. They've been accepting loads for wet waste consistently, so that's why we're recommending going with them, at least through the end of the fiscal year, with the estimated amount that we'll need to use as a backup. So, with that, any questions?
I have one and I'll save council, just to follow up because I maybe didn't understand. Is it because they don't have the capacity to take what was being delivered in the past, whether it be from the city or elsewhere, or were the recent changes in mandates in state law that came down that is impacting the local communities?
Effective November 1st, there's a mandatory nationwide standard that they have to meet and we were given notice last Thursday after they learned that they exceeded that new standard. So, all, every landfill is subject to this, so it'll be a month-to-month evaluation, so next month of this time, we might be able to be bringing all of our loads back to our current landfiller, but we won't know that until they evaluate that again.
By national standard, if you don't have that, you can send it later. Is it, did it come out of a national decision or EPA?
EPA standard.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can simplify it, I think as Barry was explaining it to me, there's a relationship between the refuse that goes into the landfill and the amount of sludge that they could accept. It was like, oh, what, 20 to one ratio?
Right. It's 20 to one and they're 20.7, so.
Right.
They just need more solid waste, is what they keep saying, so.
Find that, I don't know. Okay. Other questions for Barry?
So, exactly, what do we need to do? We need to pull this off the consent agenda?
Yes, I'll ask.
And then what's the action that you're looking for?
I'm just going to ask city council to approve this sledge hauling agreement with Waste Management, subject to final approval by the city attorney. And I know they're close to getting, working out the details with it, but I just, the current form that you have in front of you is not the final agreement.
Okay. So, I'll just follow up that, John, is the city manager or the clerk treasurer, that under the amend agendas where you'd be looking for that?
That's correct.
Okay. Andrew?
A point for Director Leroy about the numbering of the contracts to be awarded, that is in the most affordable by unit price?
Correct.
My understanding? Okay. And is it feasible that we could at some point take another look at where our demands lie for this and see if we can all house it under one house? Because I would imagine splitting it up is more costly per unit price because usually it goes with volume. And then we could perhaps renegotiate with another disposal site where we could put them all, get one price, but now we just need an interim fix. That sort of the situation?
Right. It's a combination of the weather plus the amount of wet sludge that's going out. Like I said, Waste Management's been the most consistent. My intention is to reevaluate how we're, next time we go through our bidding process on this item, is to look at a hauling sludge disposal. That's how we've been handling it because it's been most cost-effective that way, but also add a component of hauling and disposal, let the hauler determine where to bring it. Because then we just need to establish a profile of each several landfills and then he can take it à la carte to each one of them. Look at that option as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
I just, I have a question relative to that, that comment, Barry. If we rely on a, if we, we have a contract with a hauler saying, here's the sludge, you figure out where you're going to put it or take it. Are we anywhere down the chain liable? Let's say a hauler decides to take our contract and then we find out a couple of months later, he's just going out in somebody's woodlot dumping our sludge. Are we ultimately, would we be liable for any action that the hauler takes that would be in, would cause environmental damages?
First off, we have a, there's a manifest process for chain of custody with this. So, these, every load is verified from the hauler and the landfill. So, if we have documentation from both, that's been our process, that's worked really well.
Okay.
Yeah, but if they spill, I mean, obviously, we have some liability with that too, but I mean, these are licensed haulers of the state that actually take that responsibility on.
Okay, but you do have, you do get copies of where?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that answers, kind of answers that question. Okay, thanks.
Very good. See, no other questions?
I just, other items, but they're under council action. On item 2231, the motion there is, we put to amend chapter 652 adixely, a separate chapter by itself, to adopt chapter, so we would ask to make that and when we get to the regular meeting, we would bring that up.
So, it's to adopt?
It's adopt.
Rather than amend?
Yep, exactly. And I have anything else? I don't know, that's all I had.
I see, Mr. Buz might have something.
Your honor, if I may, one other update that I would have is on item 2227, which is the building demolition. My recommendation would be that any motion relative to the 1030 East Second Street, affectionately known as the Purple Church, that the approval and the funding for that demolition be contingent upon closing on the purchase. That's still a process that's underway, so I'd recommend that that be contingent on that process concluding.
So, finalization of purchase, is that what you're saying? Okay. Fine. Okay. Pass to?
Your honor, I have nothing else at this time.
I'll see if there's anything from council members related to the regular meeting agenda that might have been quoted or how much clarification, how that we can kind of get all the way or reference to different locations. Yes, Brian?
Yes, your honor, under council action number 2226, just a little more information on that, if you don't mind.
I have a study.
Okay, yeah. This is kind of a combination of some of our follow-up related to the CAS and Harrison discussion, you know, with the two-way conversion, but it takes it further in contemplating, you know, what would be the effect of closing CAS south of 8th. And along with that, we would look at what the conversion of one ways on 8th and 7th would be. So, you can see in the scope of work, there's a couple of points where the recommended consulting engineer, traffic engineer in this case, would be looking at points. I think Union Street was kind of a western point as well as a couple of other points from that. I anticipate that if you close off CAS at its southern point on the city limit, it will push a lot of traffic onto South Monroe, which I don't think is a bad thing, but it's going to alter the traffic flow and I think, you know, the prudent thing to do with it is, is to evaluate what that traffic route would look like, how much activity we can anticipate because we'll get a sense of how much is coming from the west and telegraph area into that location. And that'll also affect if we go to two-way traffic, some of the on-street parking on both 8th and 7th, but most notably 7th, I think, would be the one that would have the biggest impact. So, before we proceed with that, I think we should just do a traffic evaluation to see what that impact is for city council as well as city administration.
Yes, that's just one other thing regarding that. I believe the residents were concerned about the alleyway in that area as well, that there would be increased traffic on that alleyway if we did close that CAS area off from Kroger's.
Yes, and I think we may not get that information with this study, but there are some things that we could do to limit that circulation along the alleyway there. Good point. And I think also, this is just a element of that continued review of the one-way traffic on CAS and Harrison. Clearly, the alleys are an integral part of how that would function effectively with maybe allowing parking on one side of the street rather than both. And so, there are alleys and some of them are actually not bad shape, maybe have to make some improvements to make them more functional, but clearly, from an urban design standpoint, that was what they were designed for and I do think, long-term, getting to the heart of this, I think you can return neighborhoods back to their original and traditional character by some of these traffic changes. So, we would, the idea is to know more what the effect is and bring it back to council to consider as part of that broader dialogue.
So, I'm clear, the citizens that live in the neighborhood will not be part of the study? This is a separate?
It will have, it'll be a separate study, but I think the impact will be there as to how that will affect the traffic flow on there. This is, there's two other aspects of it that, because again, moving, it will be beneficial is what I'm saying, in a short way, because it will move much of that traffic that's headed to that Kroger site onto South Monroe and then if it's folks coming from the west, certainly 7th will have an impact and 8th to a lesser extent if that was to go two-way. But clearly, I will tell you, I think you'll see a much reduced traffic circulation there in that area if you were to change that traffic flow.
Right. Just kind of going off of Michelle's question there, is it maybe prudent for us to ask OHM to possibly involve some of the residents?
Let me take a look at, we may have it, you recall off the top of your head, one of the count points was that right there at Harrison and you're not looking like you...
No, I can tell you.
Yeah, can you? I know you can't, it just was off the top of your head.
Sure.
Yeah.
I may have a follow-up question, let's see what Patrick says.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. The count locations that we had called out were the intersections of CAS and 8th and CAS at the, where it intersects with Kroger driveway. Also, the westerly intersections of CAS and 6th, 7th and 8th, or I'm sorry, Union and 6th, 7th and 8th as the westerly limit, because that's the point where 7th Street traffic coming eastbound has to turn now and so we wanted to see what it was doing now versus what would potentially be modeled if that were, the traffic were allowed to continue eastward. And then we also have the intersections of Monroe Street and 6th, 7th and 8th, as well as the signalized driveway out of Kroger, which lines up with Jones Avenue, and the northernmost unsignalized driveway. And the presumption is that Harrison Street itself is not a, that the traffic operations on Harrison Street isn't a problem as far as the number of cars, it's just that it would go from one way to two-way. CAS Street, if the intersection were closed, the belief, or if the access to Kroger was closed, the belief is that there would be a significant decrease in the traffic and so there wasn't really a feeling that there were any operational problems along CAS and Harrison at 7th, 8th, 6th or any of those, that it was more a question of how are we modeling the change in direction that that traffic would flow?
So, I'll start. I'm trying to, I understand they have to, the traffic counts, I understand what you just, the locations that are stated here, as well as the traffic that's currently out of Kroger. I'll follow up first off with Brian's comment, because there's another alleyway that comes out onto Monroe Street and I know that's not in the city, but it also does impact Monroe Street and MDOT because I've seen left-hand turns there, which I think are problematic. That aside, I don't know if that's part of what they'll be counting or not?
Yes, that intersection is.
Oh, then it's just a driveway?
Yeah, we called it the northernmost driveway, but yes, that was, that data point and the signal would be the two modeled from Kroger.
So, and I do understand why you wanted the traffic counts on CAS and Harrison and then 8th and 7th. So, you'll take the volume of all the counts and see where they're going currently and what you would anticipate be the modeling? Was that modeling whether the CAS Street is closed or open or only closed?
Well, the current count would reflect the fact that it's open. So, that's why the intersection of CAS and 8th was picked, because that would give us the baseline for what, the presumption is everything coming northern, northerly into that intersection is primarily Kroger traffic. So, the modeling with that, with that access point being closed would be just a nominal amount from the people that live on that block, which would be just like the six houses or four houses, whatever it is on Long Court, plus the five or six that are on CAS. So, you could, you could apply just a rough trip generation and say, even at 10 trips a day, you'd be looking at under 100 cars a day that would come from CAS if the access to Kroger were closed versus, and I don't have the present number, but I believe it's over 1,000 in a day. So, then you would... So, then, you would, you would model what those trips that would normally come out CAS, where they would go. And the presumption is, the trips that would come out CAS would either go to the traffic signal if there was capacity or they would start to come to that northern, they'd shift around. And it's going to be somewhat dynamic because if you have the traffic signal that's backed up seven or eight cars, the presumption is, some of those people, if they, if they see the line is too long, are going to attempt to come out the unsignalized driveway. And those are some of the modeling assumptions that the engineering firm will have to look at.
So, 8th, if they all went to two-way and 8th Street was two-way, the modeling would, is it going to show if cars, if it was open, that they'd potentially go up 8th Street versus all the way down CAS?
I believe that it could show that. Some of those assumptions, though, are difficult to figure. I mean, I don't think you can say, well, they're definitely going to go to 7th because they can go all the way out to Telegraph, because the study isn't going to go that deep. It isn't going to stop cars and say, okay, where do you live, where are you going, to know whether they're staying in the neighborhood or going all the way out west of Union and that's, there are limitations to it, but I, it would be nice if it had that information, but probably beyond the scope of this one.
Okay. If I may?
Yes.
I do think it, the scope of it does capture the traffic coming from Telegraph to that shopping area. I mean, you can make a pretty strong case based on the numbers that'll show at Union and how they proceed further east, whether they fear to CAS or they continue to Monroe, but you'll have a good understanding of what that will look like with that traffic flow from, coming from Telegraph eastbound.
Thanks, Patrick. Mr. Pass two, other items?
I have nothing else.
I should ask council.
That's right.
The council, see if there's other items on the agenda for any clarification. Okay. With that, it's within after about 20 minutes, so at this time, unless there's no other comments, I'll close the work session.